Good evening. The time is now seven P. M. I'd like to call this board of select meeting to order for November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, asking you please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, in his book, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll call.
All right, Gaggen.
Scott Gardner. Kevin Cunningham. Item C, which is a to approve the meeting minutes for the board of select meeting from eleven fourteen. As you note, there are some amended minutes in there, but they are amended, so put your pleasure on that.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for eleven fourteen twenty-two.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, public comment. Anybody who's interested in speaking as public?
Yes, Gabriel, let me don't worry about, I'm actually here with Gabriel also, Kuti, sorry.
I'm not a good.
Yes, and we actually submitted players of interest in the conservation commission. We talked to Adrienne Paul Smith on the commission, and we looked back, and it looked like there wasn't a meeting since April, so it was just something that the both of us have unique skill sets. She used to work for the forestry service, for example, so we can definitely, you know, get that going and pick up.
I mean, I can speak on my own.
Oh, sure, yeah, I just wanted to.
With regard to water resource management, like anything related to Congress, I think moderate opinions are really good, all right? I actually think that we actually have something with Lakefield that would be a really good thing, where if we could just have meetings for a community that's currently not, that would be a good thing.
So, yeah, we're just excited and ready to get to work. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishes to be at this time? Hearing none, we'll go right to item D, which is we do not have any old business, so we'll go to item F. Item F, new business, consider an act on tax rate fund for the request of the tax collector is totaling four hundred and fifty-two dollars eighty-three cents, and that is J. P. Morgan Chase Bank, N. A.
Make a motion to approve the tax rate fund at the amount of four hundred and fifty-two dollars eighty-three cents.
Motion has been made.
I'm second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two, you have in your packet a list of proposed, and you also have a calendar there, so you can check in case there's a question, but you have a list of proposed board of select meeting dates for the two thousand and twenty-three regular year of meetings. So listed in there is February through January of two thousand and twenty-four. You have a chance to review. The only question that I had was obviously the October tenth. So if we had October ninth instead, I think.
No, you got it right. October tenth, the ninth is Columbus Day, and the twenty-fifth is, so you got that one right.
All right, that's where we're on on there, so.
Yeah, you know, you got it. I'll make a motion to approve the board of select meeting dates for two thousand and twenty-three as written.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and according to town charter, I'm writing number three, we have to have a resolution, but the resolution will be to discuss an act on appointing a town council via resolution following the town charter on section eight point two A. So I would recommend continuing town council with Shishman Shapiro, W. London, elected.
Make a motion to appoint Shishman Shapiro as town council via a resolution.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up is on the list. We have been given a pack, so it's discuss an act on approval of reappointment of members to appointed boards and commission. We have three sections to that. I want to first of all say that it took a little while to go through all of the back paperwork and to find out exactly who was, if these are appointed positions, so you'll find out if there's some that are, just kind of be read, really going through very carefully and with the fine tooth comb as to who, who is actually on what board and commissions were appointed, and then still we have some vacancies after that, so. That middle packet there shows you the asking motions. The first page is actually the full list, and when we're all done after that, we still can be able to post up onto the town website what vacancies are still available. Just as we stand as of this moment, we still would have vacancies even after we appoint people. The building code board of appeals is a five-year term vacancy. Conservation Commission obviously has some openings, one, two, three, four, five altogether. Economic Development Commission is a vacancy and housing authority, which is a tough one to do because that pick of one is a resident commissioner, so that's also one that'll be open. So in the second page is a list of the ones that need to be motioned to continue serving. I would ask that we do them as a group, let's say the first group says agricultural commission for your terms, and if you are so inclined to vote for those people, I would say do it one at a time, one group at a time. So agricultural commission, Joanne DeRosa, Jenny Kapcikovich, I keep saying that wrong, but Sheri Harmon and Luanne Cunningham, and I will recuse myself if I can do so from the land, but those are the same dates, will be from January second, two thousand and twenty-three, going out to January fourth, two thousand and twenty-seven. So we'll take more of the time, a little bit of time, it'll be helpful.
I'll make a motion to appoint the four members agricultural commission, Joanne DeRosa, Jay Kapcikovich, Sheri Harmon, and Luanne Cunningham.
Second. And again, I will accuse myself from Luanne Cunningham, but I'll be approving the other three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second group, building code board of appeals, five-year term, Ernie Colallo, January second, two thousand and twenty-three, and this is a different term because it's five years, January third, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Make a motion to appoint Ernie Colallo to the building code board of appeals.
And the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Third grouping of conservation commission is a three-year term, so Nick Anderson, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Changing twenty-three to twenty-seven.
Three-year term, so it's twenty-three to twenty.
Seven. Make a motion to add, appoint Nicholas Anderson to the conservation commission.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next grouping is a five-year term, economic development commission, Marion Chinati and June Gaggen, January one, I think it was, I wrote the wrong days tonight.
Twenty-three to twenty-eight.
Yeah, twenty-eight.
Make a motion to appoint Marion Chinati and June Gaggen to the economic development commission.
Five-year terms. Cards made the motion.
I'm second.
It's kind of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think the last one's okay. In the weapons of law enforcement commission, four-year terms, we have Randy Stillwell for, and also Tom Sinkowitz, who are being appointed if we choose to, January first of two thousand and twenty-three, and running for year term to January four of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Make a motion to appoint Randy Stillwell, Tom Sinkowitz to the Inland Weapons or Cross Commission for a four-year term.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item up is, we have been tasked to call one end of transfers because of shortages in some areas. You'll see that I also asked the police department to come up with some numbers that he could be able to do some transfers to. Just as a little bit of background, the questions have always been coming up at the last three or four meetings for board finance, will you got an overrun for the town hall garage? Are we going to be able to come up with that one, so here's your line of transfers to help with that? Also, department of health was short because they gave us a letter that said they weren't going to change, and they gave a letter afterwards, and they did change.
I had a question about that.
Yes.
This will make us hold.
That will make us hold. And then the legal notices is a question that comes up all along the time, so we're doing a lot of legal notices, so we asked to increase it by another five thousand on that. The last one there is a list of the police salaries. There was a one officer who was hired from the city of Norwich, and he had a certain number of years of service that requires you to pay for the extra time that he should have been working for the training, the expertise that he got. So the number there came out to thirty-four thousand, and so they were able to transfer from the police salaries to cover that.
Just ask what happened to the supplies expenses?
Oh, what we can't do is we can't go directly from just taking out a police line item like that for salaries, so it has to be transferred. What we did was we decided to transfer the money so we could pay them off. It's our job then to do line end transfers to cover the rest. So all we're looking for at this point is that the shortages that we have, the town hall garage, the department of health, legal notices, and of course, supplies and expenses would then be covered by the town insurance and the police salaries. So if you're so inclined, we can vote to move this forward to the board finance, and we'll get more detail to the board finance, so you can really go get back on on that.
I'll make a motion to move the line end transfers, any minus sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and seven cents to the board's board finance.
In that motion, you said how much?
Sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and seven cents.
Okay, thank you. And a second, Scott. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item up on the list is to discuss an act on purchase of bookshelves to the town clerk's vault. We have the town clerk here tonight to explain what you have in your packet, where the money would be coming from, what the item is, and what the best item actually is listed. I've spoken to Diane a little bit about this, and you'll notice that there she's, again, like anything else, if you've been trying to do, getting quotes from people is almost ridiculous. We requested three quotes because of the three companies you could find, and you're getting two quotes back. So I think the biggest thing for me to ask Diane would be, well, you can speak on your own, but the question that I had would be the flexibility from one to the other. So there's one that was a little less pricey, but I think what I got in talking with you would be, it's used, how long would it be usable for versus the other?
Yeah, so you can see in there for political, just the difference in quality that they learned, the time that they spent in the clerk's office going over all the different options and possibilities. I was looking to get, if I'm going to purchase something this much, and, you know, using that dollar fund to do so, I'd like to see the town get at least thirty years worth of space. We're just about out of space. I have maybe a month for land records, I have about space for one birth record, one book, and same for death and marriage, I'm just about out of space, let alone buildings out of space, finances out of space. We're all out of room in there, so we need to go beyond just the perimeter of the vault and really utilizing the entire vault and the space that we have in there. So the woman, Brittany, from Donegan came in, and she brought this packet that you guys should have. She spent a lot of time in there going over all different options, very knowledgeable, warranties. I know that she said the price was good for fourteen days, but she said that she would honor that price till the new year, if any price increases go up, it would be after the new year. So she showed everyone in Connecticut. However, you can see he came out twice. He came out once and gave me a quote for ten thousand dollars for maybe a half year's worth. I couldn't get too much out of this, you know, that wouldn't even get us through a year if you're in Lakefield. But then he heard that she came out, so he came out again, and he gave me another quote, but again, not a lot of detail in there, very quick with what he was going to offer. I do believe it's the price that I got in this one, so I think that may be why I got a little bit of a break on his second quote, but I feel like we'd have a better option than that, that first quote there from Donegan.
So I have a couple of quick questions, if you don't mind. How long, if we vote for it tonight, how long would it take to do the actual install?
I don't know. I have to work with Ron in maintenance, we have some peck work we need to do in there. I know he's got some other projects with the garage and things like that, so I did ask him that question, like, when are you coming, because I need to have that done before, I would get them contacted before the new year and sign and do all of that. But the rug needs to be ripped out there, per state statutes and standards, we need to pull the rug out, so our maintenance department is willing to do that. I just want to be a little flexible with them, because I know they've got a lot of projects going on in there, they're, you know, don't have a very good set in there. Once they come out, I think it's done within a day, from what she said. They do it very quickly, the installation, the entire.
Especially in the fact you just mentioned that you're really running out of time.
I am running out of time with space. We'll make do if we have to, but we are on a time crunch with what we have available to us with the space. For instance, I started land record book six oh one last week, and I had maybe three days left before that book was sold. We go through them very quickly, so space, we just need this to run there.
So we're looking also at the idea, this public is aware of what is happening. I guess you would liken this system, this file system, to that if you go to a doctor's and you pull out the cabinet, you've got all the records in file, so it's much easier to get access to, it's also going to be able to store a lot more space for you. As far as coming through with the money, so money's actually going to be coming from the town clerk dollar fund, so we're not looking at coming out of general fund or anywhere else on that, so that does make it look easier, but I'm just, I mean, I asked you this before and last again, I'm looking for your opinion about which might be the better one to go with because of what you've gone through with the interview process.
I would go with Donegan. That would be my top pick. I can clearly see what I'm going to get in there, as far as this, if you look through, I think it's in page one, she really gives you a description of what you would be getting. So it tells you how much I'd be getting for my vital storage, that's my marriage death certificates, my larger land record books, you know, how many I can get in there, you know, so she really breaks it down as to what we would be purchasing as a town in that office and what we'd be able to utilize that for. The vital one is, is key here, because you can't just have any cabinet for that, those have to be locked, and these are, like Kevin said, like something similar to you would see in a doctor's office, however, a little bit different because, you know, you can crank them, and you'll have aisles like a library that you can walk down, but one of them will be locked, so the public will not have access to that, so your records are still, you know, under lock and key, and no one will get to them, so that's all designed into this system. So we'll be able to not only use it for our land records, but also our vitals as well.
I did notice what his company did, that all shelving units are a smidge bigger than the other.
Yes, and a little bit more of a detailed warranty of, I'm pretty keen on seeing something like that in there.
If you were to make a motion, would the motion be for the datum or done?
I would go with Donegan Systems. That's Brittany, come in. It's, this company is right at the bottom corner, it's hard to read, but it's right there at the bottom corner.
Donegan Systems, okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one question, was the town clerk dollar fund?
There's two. So there's two, two dollar funds, and every time any property in Lakefield is purchased or even a lien, a release, any land record that comes into the clerk's office, that's a sixty-dollar page right off the top for just to do it, and then any additional pages, an additional five dollars of that money, the state breaks down where all of those pages go, and they set up two accounts for the vaults, every vault in every town, because that's a lot of maintenance to keep up a vault, and the taxpayers, we don't have the money paid like that. So they take that money and they put it into two different funds, you have the two dollar one, one of them gets two dollars for every record that's recorded, the other one gets a dollar for every record that's recorded. We have a substantial amount of money in those dollar funds here in Lakefield, and, but they're very specific as what we can use that, those funds for. Projects like this, we can use it, all kinds of, anything to do with your vault that you can think of, we can use that money for that, preserving your records, your documents. It's been used for several different things over the years, all kinds of important projects that have gone on in there. Right now, I feel the best use for this right now is getting us more, more space to preserve these documents.
That will include everything, even the tile floor?
Nope. We don't need a tile floor.
Oh, I thought it was VCT.
Oh, 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 in this, in the unit, yes, yes.
Oh, it's in the shelving unit?
Yeah, in the shelving unit, that will have those ramps and all of that in there. I thought you meant the whole vault.
I didn't know. I just saw VCT, it was included.
Yeah, no, so that unit will include everything.
And you said you were ripping out carpets, so I didn't, I thought they were doing it so you could move these.
I did ask the state before I came here tonight, I asked them to come down and do a walkthrough of our vault, because they used to, and go through and give me their best ideas, suggestions, anything like that, and I was going to bring that with me too today, but they don't offer that service anymore, so they're not doing that since COVID, so. But they did tell me, you know, the rug really doesn't come out, it's definitely like the state ended it.
So that's the only other expense in that same house?
Yeah. And what's under it, I already talked to the building department, we have enough, because it's all concrete in there, it will hold the weight of the unit, and just leaving it as concrete underneath, once the rug is out, it's all concrete, and it can just stay that way, maybe it doesn't have to be pretty, maybe we paint it or something, but we don't have to replace the carpet, we just have to remove the carpet.
Sorry, I'll go through that in my mind, because I've done it many times.
Yeah, I know, it's extensive when you start adding in all those pieces.
So we can entertain a motion on the purchase of the bookshelves with Donegan for the amount of, we had it in there as, was it thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars using the town clerk dollar fund?
I'll make a motion to go with the Donovan.
Donegan.
Donegan, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, the town clerk dollar fund.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that. We'll bring this up to item number, next item on the list is to discuss an act on appointing two members to the conservation commission. So we did have two letters that were submitted to the town of Lakefield. Any questions or discussion?
I only have one question. According to the town charter seven five C, it says that vacancies have to be filled by the same political party, this person I've gone, I can read it, any vacancy on any appointed board or commission from whatever cause or right shall be filled by appointment by the board of selectmen for the unexpired portion of the term vacated within thirty days of such vacancy. Any such vacancy shall be filled by the appointment of a member of the same political party as the person vacating the office, in the event that said person was affiliated with a political party. Do we know anything about that?
Because it's read from the charter, that's what it has.
I, I, I do know something about that. If the thirty days expires, it does go to board of selectmen.
Right, that's what it says. But it also says it has to be the same political party.
So, so the choice is, do we want to have a commission that doesn't do anything or not?
The choice is also by the town charter, and I think we need to follow the town charter.
Can we find out about this?
I think that we'd like to table this and get legal opinion from that, from the attorney, if that's okay?
Yeah. I'll make a motion, table this item to the next meeting, we're going to get clarification.
Yeah, for the record, I think it's okay, but I think as we know, town attorneys will do whatever the client typically wants.
Well, they also have to follow state statute.
Right.
So whether the state statute.
And if the client wants it, the town attorney will make justification for it.
We have a motion in the table, anything else? Second. Paul, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Last one up on the list is discuss an act on D E C resolution for financial assistance for interoral site assessment and remediation, negative general statute thirty-two, two eighty-five A, so we have a change of the statute from the last meeting, so we can clarify that. Anybody want to clarify any further? If not.
Just that the initial resolution that I brought forward last month, D E C D gave me an incorrect template that listed the wrong statute number. They've since sent me the correct one for the community investment fund, which I also included the statute with the resolution.
Which was nice. So my only question on this, because I read the whole thing, and it talks about bonding, so if you could clarify, it's a grant that we're getting, and it comes from bonding that the state gets, and we're just getting the money, so it's not a bond for us.
At all.
It's not, almost, just a grant.
Yep.
Hey, could you just answer another question for me? What is a grant N A D? On the beginning of it, it talks about a grant N A D, this is just.
It's a grant to help the municipality, that's what the N A D, it's a grant for help.
Oh, I did have one more question, not question, but on page four at the top, it says it can help the application if you, if you get a letter from the state general assembly. Are you planning on doing that?
Oh, yeah, I've got my request in already.
Okay, good. Questions, I can't. Okay. All right, so for that item, for the D C resolution for financial assistance for interoral site assessment and remediation using the general statutes thirty-two dash two eighty-five A, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The only other items we have are in other, and just to clarify, we have a cancellation which was for the, what normally you would have our WPCA meeting tonight, I asked for upgrade, upgrade updates on the heating system at the sewer department, as they have failed, so I asked immediately to Stephanie to go out and see if she could find companies to get bids for. She posted it up to four people, talking directly, and asked if you could get a bid for the oilers system replacement, repair replacement, so. So we had four companies that were asked. One company says it's too large of a job for them to do. A second company did give a quote. The third company and fourth company were given until last week to come back with a quote because knowing that we're going to be trying to meet, they didn't come back with anything. Up to today, so they come back with nothing. And that's the problem we've been having with quotes for four items to be done. So heat is a very important thing to have. It could lead to other problems if we don't have it. So I've asked Stephanie to give a call back to, I'll give you copies of this, by the way. But really, it's just to have a go ahead and do that in our next special water pollution control meeting. We'll vote on that just to make it official. But they have to have the heat, otherwise more things are going to go wrong. So I'll get you a copy of this. It was hometown heating is going to be doing the work, and they got quoted, reported price of $38,966.32. It's appropriate to at least let you know that, and then we'll have a special meeting for water pollution control authorities, so we can vote on that. But there are no other quotes, so it's kind of a moot point at this point. The other item, I would just say that for those people, there will be kids crafts. There will be meeting Santa and taking pictures with Santa. There'll be two carriage hay rides going on. We're going to have two fire pits. There'll be free food, and that includes hot cocoa, popcorn, candy, and cookies, and hot dogs. So for the family to come out and not have to pay a penny, I think that's a pretty good deal. So that's what's going to happen this Friday. We're also accepting donations for Project PEN. So this is again, by 15 this Friday, if you would consider coming out or sharing that word, that would be very much appreciated. Other than that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven thirty-two. Thank you very much.